All right, the time is 6:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call has been taken and I just want to welcome you to tonight's school board meeting. We'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, on to item three, which is to review, revise, and improve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any trustee who would want to move or remove an agenda item? CNN, I'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by trustee Sherman, second by vice chair Hobins. I knew that. Any public comment on the agenda item only? CNN, all those in favor for approving tonight's agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. On to item four, which is approve the minutes for, and we have a couple of special meetings we need to do. So the first one will be Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting, February 28th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes? Moved by trustee Decker. Second by trustee of Garris. Any trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the minutes for February 28th, 2023, please raise your hand indicating yes. Unanimous to all trustees present. On to 4B, which is to approve the regular board minutes for February 28th, 2023. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee of Garris. Second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the regular board meeting minutes at February 28th, 2023, please raise your hand for yes. Unanimous to all trustees present. 4C, which is the Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting Minutes for March 7th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee of Garris, second by trustee Sherman. Any trustee comments? Any public comment? All those in favor for approving the special board meeting minutes for March 7th, please indicate yes. Yes, by raising your hand. Minutes approved. On to public comment, which is five. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order. Any public comment?
There is public comment tonight. First up is Charlie Struna. Please approach the small table and turn the microphone on.
Hello, everybody. My name is Charlie Struna, last name spelled S-T-R-U-N-A. I am an employee of the district for the last 20 years. I've been lucky enough to be at Meadow Hill for all 20 of those years. I currently teach math and I'm also halftime librarian there. This is the first time I've ever spoke before the board. So thank you for allowing me this audience. And why I'm here tonight is a thank you board. Thank you to the board members for ordering that boundary study be done. It has been an issue that has been well documented, the inequity between the middle schools for many years now. And as somebody who served as an MEA rep and used to meet with Dr. Watson, we've been talking about it since then in our middle school meetings. This inequity has been felt by staff and students alike. This year Meadow Hill has five core sixth grade teachers while Washington Middle School has eight. Next year, we will have four. They will have seven. They're losing a teacher, too. Meadow Hill is also losing a non-tenured teacher and another teacher who is tenured will be displaced from our building next year. We're told that when the boundaries are redrawn, that they could be reshuffled back for the next school year, 2024. That doesn't sound like forward-thinking to me. Isn't that our motto? Forward-thinking, high-achieving? Let's hold our leadership accountable and ask them to lead by example in the future and do what's right, not what is easy. People have known we've needed this decision for a long time. Without you, board, forcing this, it wouldn't be happening right now because it's easier to just float the boat. I'm sure other schools have their stories, too. I can only speak from my lens. Again, thank you, members of the board, for getting the ball rolling on these studies when others didn't seem to have the vision. Our new superintendent has a difficult task ahead. Please continue to follow through and bring equity back to our schools. With that being said, another thing that happens sometimes in our district is people jump forward and say it's already too late. I was part of the group that worked on the middle school philosophy last year. Yet we didn't start out our beginning of the year talking about the middle school philosophy. That came a couple of months later. I know you're going to say it's too late, too late to take the teachers away from their home schools. I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Vosler. I'm also a teacher at Meadow Hill. Here speaking on my behalf, my own behalf as a district employee. Again, thank you for the energy you've put into the search for our superintendent. I know this has been a long process and you've put a lot of consideration into it and we appreciate that. Thank you also for, again, starting the boundary study. That's actually why I'm here as well. We are set to lose two teachers. It sounds like we're not alone in that. It sounds like we're riding a really close line to 30 students per classroom, which after the pandemic, we know is not reasonable. We can't do our best work when we ride the highest numbers we can budget-wise. The shortsightedness of losing a teacher temporarily for numbers that we expect to change at the end of this study has a massive negative impact on our building. Teaching isn't just a job that you show up in another building and you continue on with what you're doing. It depends on relationships with kids and families and colleagues. It depends on understanding the systems in your own building to know what needs to improve and how to do that and having the trust to be trusted to do that, to make those changes. You lose your footing, you lose your traction, you start over as a new teacher despite how much experience you have. You can't just shift and go on. And we're seeing that a lot in our internal shuffling admin and teachers alike. We're losing grounds by shifting people so often. So one of our staff members who can't be here, she's currently working with a group of students who's skiing. I have some permission to share a little bit about what we're losing. We're losing a student or a teacher, we're losing two teachers. And one of these teachers alone has gone above and beyond to strengthen a learning community. This person has taken on volleyball, track, Quiz Bowl, student advisory. They're a tireless advocate for students who need the most advocacy around equity. I can't imagine our building without these people. This is safe faces for our kids. And for one year of riding that high boundary, we're going to lose that person. We're going to lose all of their input in our school for a number that's not big enough to warrant that. Again, I don't know if we have the power and influence to pause the displacements, but especially in our school, we expect the numbers to go up quickly. I'm asking that if we have any power or influence to consider that, that we please do. We need stability for our kids and for our staff right now. It's a really hard time. And I'm wondering if we can find a way to address funding needs without compromising the well-being of our building and our kids. I also, I think I'm almost out of time, but I also have some concerns about the interventionist positions and the social work positions. And I'm really hoping that we can find some funding to keep those positions and make them more permanent so that we can get people who are really willing to stay. Our kids need support. We can find money somewhere, but we can't find good support everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? CNN, we'll move on to item six, which is reports and announcements. And we'll go on to item A, which is the student trustee report. And we'll go ahead and start off with Big Sky High School.
Hello, everyone. Good day. I'm speaking on behalf of Big Sky High School. My name is Simpoxine Morjo. To start off, we'll be, I'll be talking about the activities going around Big Sky High School. Both our basketball teams finished their season this past weekend at state tournament in Butte. We are so proud of the seniors and both teams finishing out their four years and making Big Sky proud. Our drama department put their play Take Five on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The attendance from Missoula Community was very successful and the show brought lots of laughter through its improv and other activities. Along with that, our spring sports started this week with track and field, softball and tryouts, and then tennis after school. Leadership activities throughout Big Sky. Last week, we had many of our IB diploma candidates participate in the meet and greet with the superintendent candidate. This next week, we have several grades completing the YBRS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey during advisory, and we are finishing up the My Voice survey. The ACT is coming up April 11th, and this will be the first year the test is done online. And juniors will be pre-registering this Thursday, also in advisory. The FFA Careers Development Event in Great Falls is coming up soon over spring break in which students will be given the opportunity to gain awareness on certain FFA topics as well as compete and demonstrate their own knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Hellgate High School.
Hi, I'm Julianne Lane. I'm replacing Chloe today. So to start off, our Hellgate Boys won the double A state championship and Butte and our girls took fourth place. The spring sports start this week and we're all very excited. We took the, we went to World Quest and placed sixth, which was great for our World Questers. For music, they are getting ready to go to Hawaii for the Pacific Basin Music Festival after the week of spring break. And the Good Night Theater Company put on a production of She Kills Monsters this past weekend in the Hellgate Auditorium. We went to the science fair and we did absolutely amazing this last Thursday and Friday. We got the top place for 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. We placed second overall for our projects and first overall. We also placed first as a high school. We had five student government members attend the superintendent candidate meeting and really enjoyed getting to know him. And we are very looking forward to the year to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Sealy Swan High School.
Hi, everybody. Zoom won't let me turn my camera on, but if you can hear me, I'll go ahead and give my report. Here is Sealy Swan. Track started yesterday as well as golf. Those are our only two spring sports. Since we still have a lot of snow up in Sealy, we're going to be doing a lot of indoor practices until the roads clear off and our football field melts. As far as clubs go, the Leos Club helped run the St. Patrick's Day Lunch at the Senior Center on Saturday. There are several SSHS students who are, who went to the state BPA conference in Billings. And I heard today that there's three Sealy Swan students that are going to be able to go to the national conference for BPA. Two weekends ago, Two Valley Stage hosted a concert of Irish and Scottish folk music by the band Men of Worth for the students of SSHS. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Now we'll go to Sentinel High School.
All right, good evening. My name is Jesse and I'm here on behalf of Sentinel High School. So winter sports have officially ended. Our girls' basketball team took sixth place at the state tournament in Butte. The Sentinel Band accompanied them and performed during their games, as did the Sentinel Cheer and Dance Team, all representing Sentinel well. Our boys' basketball team finished up their season at the divisional tournament. The band also traveled to the double A festival in Great Falls where they gave one of the best performances, and they are also preparing for their spring concert tomorrow. Spring activities start today, including tennis, track and field, and softball, and they will be practicing throughout the remainder of the school year. Tennis still is a little up in the air as the courts by Playfair will not be completed through the remainder of the season. So we're going to have to be a little flexible in finding practice courts for them. Freshman orientation was last Wednesday where we welcomed our incoming freshmen with lots of students signing up for different clubs and activities, and our Spartan ambassadors helped to facilitate that. Academic World Quest competed last week at the University of Montana where four teams from Sentinel competed, all placing in the top half. And one team from Sentinel won the competition by one point and qualified for the national competition in Washington DC at the end of April, out of 80 total teams. Robotics competed at the Grand Forks, North Dakota Regional Competition this past week. And Quiz Bowl will be competing in Bozeman tomorrow at the Academic Olympics. And in fact, a team from Sentinel Quiz Bowl has already qualified for the national competition in Atlanta. BPA has been competing today and yesterday at the annual state leadership conference in Billings with eight students attending. Five students competed at the science fair held in Bozeman. HOSA has planned volunteering opportunities, including cooking for the Ronald McDonald House, and they are planning a bake sale for St. Patrick's Day. Key Club had a successful blood drive this past weekend and student government organized a cleanup of the parking lot and also helped to put together the talent show that was held today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to 6B, which are announcements from the superintendent. Over to you, Mr. Lodge.
Good evening, everybody. I have two things to tell you about tonight. The first one is the 21C grant that we have been a part of with the Washington Foundation for the past seven, eight years. This would be the next iteration, and we've been working with the University of Montana to modify our, our project to make it a little more narrow and focused than it's been in the past. And then we added some money to it because we needed some money on our side to implement activities and ideas. So it's always been a 1.5 million grant over three years, and the money's been shared between the two institutions. So we put in a four with the university's consent for 2.6 million, and we got it. So they accepted that this week, which is pretty exciting because it means for the next three years, we really, and we organized it around our end, around our strategic plan, which is a lot of zero to third grade, a lot of mental health for our special ed staff, and then there's a lot on the university's side as well. And there's people now built into that that can help us initiate programs and ideas, and it won't fall on the backs of principals and teachers. So I really think it's a chance to move the needle of the things we want to do, and it's a big deal. So that has not really been made public. We're still working with the university to talk about some type of press release, but it's a $2.6 million grant and they accepted us. So, big stuff. The other one I wanted to tell you about, we've been working behind the scenes at the Meat Lab at our Ag Center to develop with contracts so that we can somehow make most of what we do out there as animals are processed, that the food goes back into the school system or goes back into the university system or it kind of stays inside this educational component. So on Friday of this week, and any of you are invited to come if you'd like, we're going to have a tour of the Meat Lab with the University of Montana. And they're going to send their executive team and their sustainability team, and we're going to show them what we have and see if our Meat Lab and our processing plant basically could join with them. I don't know how much, it's kind of a mutual interview back and forth to see what might be developed contractually. But it's another step towards farm to table and staying inside our educational component. So we've also are developing a contract with Target Range School District and our own school district, so buying back. So we really are looking forward to seeing what we might be able to get done with the University of Montana. We got to be careful because they probably have quite a large volume of food, and we may not be able to meet all of that or even what percentage we might be able to do. But it's pretty exciting again because I think it's an opportunity to collaborate with our partners at U of M and see what might be able to be done to keep the meat local and keep everything in-house, so to speak, and educationally in-house. What I'd like to be able to do over time is not have just the area ranchers come to us and want us to be treated somewhat like private business because we're not. And then sometimes we can't meet their timelines because we're educational facility, there's frustration. So the more we can get inside of educational institutions, I think the better. But we don't know what their expectations are and that we don't, we need to interview them, they need to interview us. So I'll keep you apprised and see what comes out of this conversation. But it's Friday of this week from 10 to 12. Any of you are invited, if you'd like to come? I'd love to have some board members there and we'll just walk with them and initiate a conversation. And I don't think we're going to be doing any contractual development at that moment, but I think it gives us a general idea of what we might be able to accomplish. So Friday this week, 10 to 12, if you've got time, we'd love to have you. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. There are no board discussions for the consent agenda items as they are routine. Is there any board member who would like to move an item off the consent agenda? CNN, we'll move on to item A, which is to acknowledge MCPS student attendance agreements. And I will take elementary, we'll do two motions, elementary and high school. So first, is there an elementary motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by trustee of Garris. Second by vice chair Hobins. There is no board discussion, any public comment on the agenda items? CNN, all those elementary trustees in favor of approving the attendance agreements, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. To 7A, the high school for the, hold on, too much coffee. Okay, 7A, which is the high school acknowledgement of the attendance agreements. Is there a motion by high school representative, vice chair Walker Andrews? Second by trustee Sherman. No board discussion, any public comment on the agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving that high school student attendance agreements, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So on to item eight, which is new business. And A1 is information only. It's the 2023-2024 general fund projections, and this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. And this is a follow-up to our conversation in February about the general fund. There's information that's pulled into focus more clearly, the budget picture. And when we talked last time, we talked about the fact that some state allocations weren't available during our February meeting. So those allocations are now available, and, which is good news. We all know that the elementary budget picture is not great, but the boost in state funding was positive on the elementary side. So as reflected in the background, you'll see we've experienced an increase in budget of 672,000 in the elementary. This compares to our previous estimate of 303. The high school, it decreased by 409,000. So the total increase there is 1.1 million instead of 1.5 million. As also is reflected in the background section, you'll see the impact on the over-based levies that we had estimated last time. And you'll see that the elementary over-based levy went from 48,000 to 261,000 based upon that boost in school state funding. And then the high school went down from 308,000 to 128. There's a little more detail on the background that you can look at, but why don't we jump onto page 18 and just start looking at the changes on our projections? And I think Tyler has it up on the board. So page 18, you've seen this spreadsheet a lot, and I apologize, but it's updated with the new information. And as reflected, the positive increase in the elementary was $213,000. And then the high school, again, was a reduction in 409,000. So the increase in the general fund, assuming passage of the levies that we're proposing here, the 261,000 in the elementary and 128,000 in the high school would be budgetary increases of 970,000 in the elementary and 1.1 million in the high school. We've had some adds to the budget. We talked about in terms of retirees, positions that aren't replaced on the elementary side. Then we have some staffing impacts and building into the budget some of the ESER funds that we've used to help us balance the last couple of years. And you'll see the balance before we look at other adjustments. On the elementary, it's a negative or a deficit of 2.3 million. And then on the high school, it's 350,000. So two very different pictures. From a positive standpoint, you'll see the 2.3 million we're addressing through a variety of sources, reductions, expenditure offsets. One is continuing to use some ESER support to offset expenditures in the general fund. That's the biggest amount, that's over a million dollars. Then we do the increase, the IDA Part B allocation to the elementary district. That has a negative effect on the high school side. We also changed from a 60-40 allocation of some expenses to 55-45. That has a positive impact on the elementary, negative on the high school. We have some budgetary adjustments based upon past experience, including specifically in our budgets for substitutes. And so we're recognizing some savings, if you will, there. And then also boosting our permissive levy in the tuition fund for excess special ed costs. So that totals about 2.3 million, all of those adjustments that are estimated for next year to help us balance. And you'll see an ESER support of 1.7 million in the packet. The reason that's a million 94 is this, that number wasn't changed when we had that boost. So up on the screen, you'll see the more recent numbers on page 19. The high school, similar information. The 400,000 has actually increased, the ESER reliance of 400,000 has increased to 810,000. And again, that's directly related to that budgetary change up above. So the elementary went down in terms of reliance upon ESER and the high school went up. Those other impacts have negative impacts on the high school, the IDA Part B allocation and the 60-40 to 55-45. We also have some funding recognition or some balancing, rebalancing in the budget that'll support the high school and excess special ed costs. And again, these are, the deficit in the high school's $9,000. So we're essentially in a balanced position based upon these moves. The good news on the elementary side is that we've been relying on ESER at over $2 million since COVID came into play, and here we're dropping it back to a million, just over a million, which we need to do because the ESER reliance is going to have to expire in September of 2024. We can't go beyond September of 2024. But we're riding it out as far as we can. So last time we talked about the calculation of the base and max budget, and I'm not going to go into that exhaustive detail tonight on the funding pieces. But on page 20, you'll see how the maximum budget is funded among the state and local sources. And only a couple of things I want to point out. So if you look under the difference column, you'll see that the special ed allowable cost is 347,000 and the guaranteed tax base increase is 192,000. So those are significant increases in state funding, and they relate directly to our special ed expenditures in the elementary district relative to the rest of the state. So there's a disproportionate cost reimbursement allocation from the state, and that's based upon our relative special education expenditures. And it's part of the funding formula, and it's part of how it's funded here. It's primarily funded with state, with state dollars, not entirely, but primarily. If you follow the difference column down to about the middle, you'll see a base levy increase of 47,908. This is the half-two permissive levy increase. And then you'll see the 261,405,04, that's the over-base voted levy, that's the voted part. So between the two, that's a 300 So between the two, that's a $309,000 increase in local funding. That's the only local support that you'll see and that's part of that funding increase. The total of funding increase is 976,000. So that portion that's local, including the voted levy, makes up 31% of that increase. So it's pretty good. It's primarily funded by the state, even with an over base levy. If you, so really the base levy, the over base levy that that's that's highlighted or that that appears about a third of the way down that list of revenue descriptions, that is our local permissive support. And you'll see we have the total numbers listed for 2023 and the projected numbers for 2024. And for 2024, it's about 13.1 million in total. The 8.7 million is the part that's over base levy. The 4.4 is the base levy part of the of the school funding formula. That's the have to permissively levy that amount or have to levy that amount. Couple of corrections that are that are, I'm not sure if they're made up on page 20, but down near the bottom, the mils levied for 2023 is inaccurate. That amount should be 88.19. Then the 90.31 is correct for 2024, but the increase is 2.12 mils or 2.4%. So just wanted to point that out. And the reason for that correction is that when we originally calculated 2023, we were using prior year tax valuations, 143 million rather than than the 145. So that number just carried forward incorrectly. The above amounts are are correct. Jumping to page 21, same information on the high school. Big difference between this and the elementary. If you look again, a third of the way down to the base levy, you'll see that it's actually going down. So we're going to levy less to fund our base budget than we do now by 30,474. Our over base levy is 128,000. The net increase to the local taxpayer is a total of 97,580. That represents just over 8% of the total increase of 1,157. So that's that's a primarily funded increase that's that's primarily funded by the state and very much a difference between a district that has some enrollment increase versus a district that's experienced enrollment decrease or enrollment decline like the elementary district. Similar correction at the bottom, the mils levied in 2023 are 42.09, not that 42.83. Again, the same same impact. We use the previous tax valuation of 257 million instead of the 261. And it was just the timing of when that calculation was done last year. The the increase, it's not a decrease in mils, but it's an increase of 0.36, very small. 0.85% is that increase. So if you if you look at the over base levy, we're we're saying that it's a, in the high school, 0.69, 69 cents per year for a $100,000 home. That's not counting the reduction in the base levy. So that the true increase is is 0.49% or 49 cents. But that's not going to appear on the ballot. That's just, we have to show the ballot the the increase associated with the over base levy. But but you will know that it actually decreases a little more than what we're showing here. Page 22, and I'll buzz through these. I think most of you have seen this. This is just a good reminder about how the our our general fund budget is funded both by the state and then by local sources. And you know that the base budget is 80% of the basic and per A and B entitlement. And that those amounts are broken up into a 44.7% payment of direct state aid, 44.7% of the basic and per A and B entitlement. And then 100% of those those five funding components, quality educator at risk, Indian Ed for All, American Indian Achievement Gap and Data for Achievement Payment. That's at 100%. And the special ed is at 140% for the base budgets. Then the the local mils, we're back, we back into that number based upon how much guaranteed tax base aid we get from the state. So that number is, that's why it fluctuates from from year to year. And if you jump to page 23, you'll see the numbers inserted so you can kind of follow that through. You'll see the local levy of the 4.4 million and the G T B payment from the state of 9,150. That's that's a significant improvement in state funding that goes back to Senate Bill 175 four years ago, 2018 legislative session. And then otherwise, you'll see the direct state aid. One correction here is that the that 44.7% would suggest it's it's all of those items, but it's really only that 15.7 million. The other parts are at 100%. So just a little correction there. Jumping to page 24, this is just just kind of a good way to look at the general fund makeup from one year to the next. You can see going back to 2022 through 2024, our estimated budget, how much the over base levy levy changed based upon voted levies. Again, we're operating at max budget, which is reflected there. And, you know, as a reminder, the school funding formula dictates an amount that we can adopt as a budget. We don't adopt budget based upon need. It's tied to amounts reflected in the funding formula. If you then look at the base budget and you can see the portion of the base that's funded locally, the remaining portion of the base is funded by the state essentially. Down below, that amount is reflected in total levies, the 13,158 for 2024 compared to 12,848 in 2023. But the the total percentage is still hovering around the same amount. It's actually a little less. We're funding 30.5% of the total budget in 2024 versus 30.7 in 2023 and 31.1% in 2022. And again, you'll kind of see what the the tax impact would be. Again, we're using old taxable values for 2024. Those are last year's tax valuations. We won't have those new numbers until August. But we'll, for all of our calculation purposes, this is the number we're required to use. 25 is the high school version of what what you just looked at in terms of the funding sources in a pancake schedule. So you can see where where the dollars come from and a small over base voted levy. And then again, looking at the same numbers on page 26, I look at the total levies down at the bottom and and are, as reflected earlier, our our increase of 1,157 is primarily funded through the state. So that's why our local levies go up slightly, but our percentage of the total goes down from 34% to 32%. And and again, it's a factor of increasing enrollment numbers versus decreasing enrollment numbers. So that's a lot of information. We're really ahead of where we're typically at, partly because we have negotiated a two year, we have, this is the second year of a negotiated salary increase for our staff. So we know those numbers. We can estimate them. We also have this this security blanket in the form of the ESER support that's helping us balance. So we're not talking about how we fund a 2.3 million dollar deficit in the in the elementary district. We're talking about using some of these one time only sources and then also shifting some budget expenditures to some federal funds and and having that impact on the on the the high school side. So jumping ahead a little bit, this is this is why we're later on going to talk about recommending these levies be set now rather than next board meeting. But for purposes of this conversation, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Trustee Witcher?
Thank you for all of that. If you could summarize in two sentences what all that meant for myself and the general public, that would be really appreciated.
Yeah, the school funding formula is complicated and enrollment dictates budgets. And declining enrollment translates to a larger portion of over base or levy, local levy funding. And we've, this is contemplating, and this is more than two sentences, Meg. But, you know, we we haven't seen 3% inflationary increases really as long as I can remember. We get as close as, we got close. But that means these components are 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 bumped up as high as they can be bumped up. And still, you're seeing some some definite fallout of the enrollment deep dive that we saw in the elementary district. And we've we've patched it together with ESER funds. And we've we've done that intentionally. And what we're trying to do is is ride that wave as long as we can to allow those enrollment numbers to recover. And so we keep buying ourselves another year, another year, another year. And that's what we're doing.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
I hope he can hear me. One thing that I heard, I was just at the legislature and someone was talking about when they do these inflationary increases, that in actuality, we only get 80% of what that is. Could you explain that one?
Yeah, and I'll shoot for two sentences again. So if you go to to page 22, and maybe this this will help, I'll actually go to page 23. The base funding is 80%. And so if you look, and and this isn't the components we looked at before, but but some of the components are there. We know that the per A and B entitlement, the basic entitlement, the special ed funding piece, and all five of those funding components all went up by 3% or by 3%. But the base budget is only 80% of that amount. So that's why the 3% is really only 80%. To get the full 3%, you got to do an over base levy. So if you if you adopt budgets at max, which is what we're proposing, then we would benefit from the full 3%, which is also why, you know, the high school is doing well, frankly, because it has both a 3% plus pretty good enrollment increase.
Trustee Decker?
So continuing to try to put this in like plain.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it is complicated. When you say that we're trying to ride it out and sort of maintain as long as we can, what you're really talking about is our current level of service and staffing, that we're trying to continue to provide as much of what we've been doing as we can do despite the fact that fewer students in the buildings, each individual student, means less money coming in from the state. And so we are trying to sort of use the available funds that are available to us, including ESER, including what the statute allows us to bring in via this levy to maintain. And that's the people and services that make up what people are used to having in the district. Is that right?
That's totally right. I mean, you, the the budget year after COVID, so the the enrollment counts that followed, the fall enrollment counts in 20 and 21, resulted in a reduced budget authority for us of almost 700,000. And that's never happened since I've been here, where we've we've been flat before, but we have never gone backwards. And 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 part of it was, we're not running an over base levy during that period of time. And that was a decision by the board. But the, if you put it in the in the terms of enrollment, the each K five student is represents about $6,000 in state funding, just over that. And each, that's each K six, each seven A student represents over 7,000. And so between the two, you're, from that point of of dropping 300 kids, you're, you know, that's over $2 million each year. So right out of the gate, we are looking at ESER to fund 2.6 million of the general fund, which is purely offsetting certified staffing costs. And it doesn't matter certified or, but certified staffing costs. So you're, that's where the funds are going.
Can I just, so, and what makes that so complex is that in a district as large as ours and where, as folks have discussed, relationships and teams are such an important piece. And we also know that numbers are going to go up and down. It's not as simple as one might think of one's household budget, that you're just going to kind of cut back here or there, that those decisions are not as straightforward as that. And that one person's frivolous program is someone else's lifeline in our school district, to be totally straightforward about it. One, a service that one family or child might never utilize is the thing that keeps somebody else in school ongoing. And that's what makes these decisions so complex and why we need to have these conversations and also hear from people, just to try to put this budget conversation in like real life terms.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Trustee of Garris?
Pat, two part question. Both are easy, though. You probably get these done in three sentences. So looking at this of ESER funds to balance, we're using about 2.1 million ESER funds. So and then all ESER funds needs to be spent by September of 24. So this budget takes us through July of 24, correct? So how much ESER funds will we have left? And how much can we affect that before they need to be spent in September of that next year?
Yeah, a great question because what we've we've, and I should acknowledge our budget and levy committee, Meg and Keegan and Cohen are on that committee along with our assistant Supes and Dave. And we've been talking a lot about about ESER and about that, the the hard cutoff. And so one thing that that we're planning for in terms of ESER usage next year for FY24 is is preserving a small amount, a small meaning a million, to to cover elementary district payroll in September because you get to expand right up till September of 2024. So it's it's the the final step in utilizing ESER one last time to give the elementary district one more year to recover. And if, it's not going to fully recover because we've got the demographic information and we we see where it's flat, but it it's it's going to stop dropping. And and at a 3% inflationary increase, flat enrollments mean something. I mean, they they mean something and something more than what we're seeing. And so we're just buying time. And and so when we are planning to run, and we've shared it with the budget and levy committee, we'll share it with this board too, or with the full board, is just the the run out of those those funds. And we started at 28 million and and we're literally winding down. And by the end of next year, we'll hoping to have 1.2 million bucks.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
So two, just to make that explicit, so at the end of it, we will have spent every dime of ESER, right? We're not losing any.
Exactly correct.
Question two, I missed, what changed between now and like two weeks ago? What was it that got better?
Yeah, so so if if you think back to the the calculation of of the maximum budget, we had a 200% of the special ed allocation. The special ed allocation consists of two block grants, the related services block grant and instructional services block grant plus disproportionate cost reimbursement. Disproportionate cost reimbursement as a component of that is is an allocation based upon our special ed expenditures relative to the rest of the state. So that's why the high school went down, is that we're spending less general fund dollars on special ed in the high school and more in the elementary. And it's part of the reason we're doing this adjustment that you see on page 19, where we're doing this I D A part B allocation. That's federal special ed dollars. So we're boosting the allocation in the elementary because we can, we have capacity, and and reducing it in the high school. And we have the flexibility to expend those funds. It's one grant between the two districts. The high school was was the one suffering for a while. So so we're we're doing the opposite. We're going to put more federal special ed dollars into staffing in the in the elementary side. So hopefully, what that'll mean next year on the general fund So hopefully, what that'll mean next year on the general fund side is the disproportionate cost allocation will be flatter and not so dramatic.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item?
We do have public comment tonight on this agenda item. Jane Doarty, could you please approach the microphone and turn it on? Say and spell your name.
That's fun. I am Jane Doarty, D-O-H-E-R-T-Y. First of all, thank you. Sorry I was late, I had parent-teacher conferences until six, because one went long, and I have them tomorrow and the next day, too, and I was planning them this weekend. In addition to writing a six hours' worth of letter to you all, which I don't think made it under the wire, I also have in my hand, very briefly rushed compile responses from nine Paxton staff members, in response to a survey that a colleague and I created yesterday, between the two minutes we had to breathe yesterday during the day. I wouldn't, at the best of times, been able to understand any of that, so thank you for understanding it and making sense of it and doing your very hard work. I acknowledge that what I'm asking is not an easy fix. Last week, I sat there and chatted with the new superintendent, asked him a few questions, one of which had to do with his capacity to advocate for us at the state level, given that there are legislators talking about earlier academic intervention and teacher retention, both of which are very salient at the moment, given that we're about to lose either one or possibly both of our academic interventionist and behavioral interventionist positions at Paxton, based on last week's budget decision. I could say a thousand things, I'm going to try to resist and just say a few. One, there is an urgency around this decision being put on hold, no idea how it works, but because we have one person who is now, instead of working on what she's supposed to be working on, maybe both of them, thinking about what on earth she's going to do next year. Two, we as a staff and community at Paxton, as you well know, are pretty vocal, you heard from us a lot last year, we're not failing to speak because we don't feel strongly about this, we're failing to speak because we didn't know about it, and because we're extremely busy, and if you can hear it, my voice is utter exhaustion. We care extremely passionately about our most understood kids, whose academic and behavioral issues impact the environment of the classroom, the quality of life for the families, and the longevity of the teachers. I'm 50, I'm not quitting or going somewhere else, too late in the game for that, but I have young colleagues who might, very well might, if this keeps going on. We have two wonderful professionals in our building who are changing the face of education in our school with their combined skills. I have a lot of testimony from the nine people who had time to write today about how vital they are. And while I understand that none of you wants to get rid of them, none of you is making these decisions lightly, the other thing I'd like to say is that we are not a monolith. K through eight is not one entity which is equally funded, and while enrollment rates may be going down elsewhere, they're not in decline at Paxton. Fourth, or three of the four second-grade classes are at 21, which is above capacity and growing. And if we lose these people, the same families we were advocating for last year, who didn't need to be in dual language, are the same families who are going to suffer the most. And it's going to be more serious for the rest of the class, too, because I'm not going to have the capacity to meet the needs of those children if I don't have the supports of the academic and behavioral interventionist. Without them, my job is near impossible. I will do it relatively well, but not anywhere near as well as I have.
Close-in statement, please.
Thank you for giving us time to express our opinions. There are many more people who want to say more. Thank you for putting a pause on this and hearing from us, because it matters very much. Thank you.
The next public comment is from Monica Roscoe. Please stay and, please say and spell your name.
Monica Roscoe, M-O-N-I-C-A-R-O-S-C-O-E. Nice to see many friendly faces out there. I just want to advocate to keep the one behavior interventionist and one academic interventionist as well in each of the elementary schools. We used to have CSCT in a lot of our schools, and school counselors and students really benefited from that outside therapy from Western Montana Mental Health and also from other organizations. Just this last week, one of those organizations pulled out of Hawthorne, and so those 20 students that were getting mental health services no longer have that, and so it's another crisis. So one of the solutions that I thought was great was creating this in-house academic and behavior interventionist in the schools, and I'd advocate to keep that. In the staff shortage, it's really difficult to find people, and the people that are already in place already have relationships with these families, and that's difficult to build. And I know Kate Spencer and Deb Tipton are just fantastic, and I'd like to advocate to keep them. And I also understand, like Grace said, it's relationships, and there could be funding in the future, but I'm seeing the staff, you know, fleeing for job security in that just one-year-only position. So I'd like to advocate for permanent positions in the future. Thanks.
Seeing none. Now we'll move on to topic two, which is House Bill 630, 2021 Additional Financial Support High School Budget Amendment. And that is back over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is some interesting but good news on the high school side. So many of you maybe have seen a budget amendment that we've done, I think some of you haven't, but we're able to do budget amendments in the general fund when we have an enrollment increase. And what the legislature did in 2021 is, schools were getting large amounts of ESER funds, so they suspended the ability to do a budget amendment based upon enrollment increases, based upon our allocation of ESER funds. And this was, you know, frankly, a state funding savings. I mean, and, but what they put in place, they did put in an alternative plan, and the plan was to, to fund, to calculate and fund any available budget amendment that's linked to an enrollment increase. And let me back up. As you know, we do enrollment counts in October and February of the year preceding the budget year. So it's when the budget year comes into play, and you have an enrollment bump that's different from what you had the prior year when you did the calculation, then it results in a potential for an amendment. And here, the state calculated in the high school a budget amendment, and as per House Bill 630, the bulk of that amendment was funded with dollars we already got, ESER-funded dollars. And if you look at the attachment on page 27, you'll see the directive from the OPI regarding how that budget amendment is broken up, between existing ESER funds to the tune of 10% of your ESER 2 and 3 allocation, some targeted assistance funds, which is new ESER funds, and then the final one, the third step, is the additional funding, which is state base aid, which is an increase in base funding. That's, those are the funds. And here, we received 595,000 for FY '22, and then 19,892 for FY '23. Those funds come into us as one-time-only funds in our Fund 15, in our miscellaneous program fund. We have pretty broad discretion to use the funds, and with some link to enrollment increases. And certainly, as one-time-only funds, they're not recurring, and so they're, so it's more difficult with staffing to cover with these one-time-only funds, because they're not available year after year. But they do work well when we're making teaching and learning or curriculum purchases, when we're doing adoptions of curriculum, science, math, social studies, and the like. And that's what we've used one-time-only funds for in the past, in the form of year-end dollars that we have. And so we're not recommending a use of these funds, I'm just pointing them out. So these are some funds that are available in the high school. The largest portion we already have in pocket, the 819,000, we have an additional 135, 135K in ESER funds on the high school side, which is great. And then this boost into Fund 15. So just want you to be aware of those funds coming through the door.
Yep, this is the information-only item. Any trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
So adding to this, adding to inter-local agreement, adding to everything, how much money, if we were to simplify it to like a home account, how much money is there in the bank?
Yeah, so the ESER funds are not in the bank. You have to request those from the state. These funds are in the bank. So the inter-local funds that were built up with, you know, as we've talked about, with primarily the elementary budget when it was on solid footing, are about $3 million. And the inter-local is the multi-district funds. We intentionally create a multi-district agreement so we can preserve funds and create that savings account, and that's about 3 million. Add to that, not in the 282, but in Fund 15, is this 595,000. And we talked about, at the Budget Committee, some other sources. There's Medicaid reimbursement funds that we, again, try and preserve at the end of the year. It's, it's, it's funds that come in, and then they go out to cover special ed costs, but if we have year-end funds in our general fund, we cover those expenses with those year-end funds in order to preserve those Medicaid funds. And that's another funding source. And sorry, I don't have the number. Then we also have indirect cost reimbursement. These are funds that we pull in for direct grant management, basically the business staff that you're allowed by state statute. We, again, pay for salaries with those funds, but if we have year-end funds, we don't, we use them for that purpose, again, to create this preservation of funds. So between the inter-local and these funds, you can, you know, I'm confident there's 3.5 to 4, yeah.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Decker?
I guess, I'm trying to think how to formulate the question, because I'm trying to imagine how it feels to hear about a $2 million grant, and, you know, another million dollars in this enrollment boost funding coming from the state and what there's available. And while at the same time, folks, you know, on the ground and in the field are learning about changes in staffing structure due to falling enrollment and due to the end of ESER. And I feel like, like I, I think dollars, they're not all equivalent. Many of the dollars that the district has to spend have rules about what you can spend a particular dollar on, and so we're not actually able to just move money between accounts in that way. But I guess, maybe you, Pat, or someone even from the committee could speak a little bit about how, how we have a sense for what sort of funding is available, and how, how some of that process is going on? Because I think folks will have questions. When we hear about grant funding and additional funds coming in, at the same time as there's reduction in staff in some places, that's hard for people to wrap their minds around. And these dedicated dollars that can only be spent on this and not on that are kind of, that's not the way our home budgets often work, right? Like, money can be spent on what you want to spend it on. So anyway, maybe can we just get a little more insight into that process, if this is not too much of a, okay?
No, and I think, you know, using the, your home budget comparison, it's if you have a plan to buy a new house, and you're going to incur a mortgage, that mortgage is going to require recurring revenue in order to serve the debt. And you might, at the same time, have one-time-only funds or funds in your savings account, which will allow for a down payment or allow for you to reduce that obligation. When we look at the general fund as our operating fund, we want to pull into the general fund all of the ongoing positions that we can. And we don't have them all in there. I mean, and the reason we don't is, as you've mentioned, there's, there's positions that are grant-funded. ESER is a big example. And even though, you know, that grant is coming to an end, I mean, we're still funding positions next year. And we used ESER and to fund positions, salaries and benefits primarily. And, and that's, that's, you know, that's, I think, the right approach, because it's directed at students, it's directed at the schools. But you, you ultimately are going to come to the end of the line with one-time-only funds. You're eventually not going to, you're eventually going to have that 10th year of your mortgage, and you're not going to have the recurring revenue to make your payment, because you've subsidized it for 10 years with one-time-only funds that are gone. I mean, because they're not restored. And, and so it's, part of it is, we offset expenditures all the time. We gave examples of special ed costs and staffing that are funded with Medicaid dollars, positions are funded with indirect costs. We also look at the end of the year for any way we can to save. And we do that as, because we've been doing this long enough to know that the funding ebbs and flows. And so what you try and balance is your ability to operate ongoing budgets based upon anticipated enrollments. Because when we were operating following COVID, we had, great, we had low class sizes, and Dave can talk about this better than I can, but we had 12 and 15th classes that could be 20. And the absolute intention was to keep staff. I mean, that was the intent. You're, with, with those grant funding sources going away, you're eventually going to need to ensure that positions you're keeping from year to year, especially with tenure laws and everything else, that you have the funds to cover those positions on an ongoing basis. And at, at worst, with the general fund, you're going to remain flat. I mean, I mean, at worst, you're going to remain flat, which means you're going to, aside from increases for salaries and benefits and that type of thing, that you're going to at least be able to maintain those positions. And, and I think it's, it is a tough conversation, but I think it's also, you know, when you look at this budget sheet, we have, you know, over 2 million that's still picked up by means other than, than staffing reductions, which has been, if you look back, and you guys know, having been here, that's what we try and do, is make those adjustments that do not result in reductions in staff. And, and so ESER was great, but it also sets up unreasonable expectations, and we've seen that with other grants, you know, that do end. And, you know, and, and absent a funding source, then, then, you know, I think the committee, and they can talk about this as well, that the first effort with the committee is, how do we keep certain ESER-funded positions in place? And there's no room to move them in the general fund at the moment. But we have one more year of operating with a lot of those positions. The behavior interventionists will continue, the fine arts specialists will continue, so those positions will continue, and the subsidy for the general fund will continue. But there is an end to the ESER funds, that's, that's the thing.
Trustee Mercer?
So from my simplistic way of thinking, if we were running at, the ESER funds is a deficit, if we're running at 2 million this year, maybe 1 something next year, is that the estimate? Or is it still 2?
In the, in the elementary, 1.
1 in the elementary, but then like?
800 in the high school.
So close to 2. So if that's where we are a year from now, we would have two years' worth of savings to continue, at which point, there would be a hard, hard, hard wall. So to me, the question is, a year from now, what's our best guess with demographics and whatnot, whether we will get back to a level to make that jump and be prepared to run that down close to zero, but land somewhere? If we're not going to land somewhere, we need to make some cuts so we don't crash. I do think, and I think some of us have talked about this, I mean, I mean, maybe Grace put this in my mind, we've been talking about these positions compared to nothing, compared to just themselves, and the lack of money. So at some point, we cut those positions, because there literally is not money. And we'll talk about asking the community to put in whatever they want, but in some ways, it's we'll talk about asking the community to put in whatever they want. But in some ways, it's, it's not that big. I mean, even if the building funds, we're talking a million or something. So I do wonder, do we compare them to other things? Because I, I, this is all very heartfelt, and I just, what's the solution, though? Give, give me another thing to cut instead. I mean, I, that's the crazy, I mean, I don't like that in any way, but this isn't a business where we can just forego profit or something. This is the money there is, and there is no other money. So what do we cut instead? So maybe we look more broadly at other things. I mean, maybe we have a, you know, like a Dave movie where you put it on the table and say, what can we, what are the, what can we come up with in money? I mean, I don't know. But I, I, I do think it's a little weird to be comparing it, these positions against nothing, just because they are the most recent thing we had. They might be a good idea, and they might be better than something we've had for a while.
Trustee Witt?
Yeah, I mean, most of the time on the committee, we've been talking about the individual, like, positions and trying to keep them. And I think, honestly, Pat's doing a good job of pushing this out and trying to say, well, okay, you said September twenty-four, and it's, I believe that ESER money is combined for all the districts, so high school and elementary. And so that part can shift, even though we're looking at two totally separate budgets. And so we're moving that money around, and we're trying to keep all those positions that we can for as long as we can. And like Cohen said, we'll have to land, we can't crash. And we're looking at ways of moving money into different funds, because, yeah, there are those restrictions. There are the ideas of, you know, like, certain laws over tenure and stuff like that. So there's a lot of things that we, that are off the table. And we always can kind of go back to ninety percent of our budget about is salaries and benefits. So as soon as you look at cutting things, you're almost certainly going to have to look at individuals. And that's awful. There's no, like, good way around it. What, we can't ask the teachers to bring more supplies. They already do that way too much. So, I mean, we're going to keep looking at it. I think we have some ideas that are kicking out there that we're, we're trying. And I think things like, you know, like seeing these levies coming up for getting to max budget. Like, yeah, we could probably get away with not doing it and using more ESER funds, but it's only going to make it worse. But still the focus of our committee, trying to save these jobs, trying to save these positions, trying to provide it not just for that individual, but for the students. And a lot of these positions were created with ESER money and CSCT stuff all changed. So we'll just keep working and seeing what we can do to move money to keep them.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Seeing none. Any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none. Now we'll move on to topic three. So the next six are voted, are, will be voting for levies. So just, that's what the next six items are. So I'll, I don't know, I'll pass it back over to you, Mr. McHugh, and then we'll just go through elementary and high school for each one.
All right. Thank you. I, I probably could do the, the general fund resolutions and ballots together, and then we could look at them separately. The, these, the, the resolution begins on page twenty-nine. And as I mentioned, the, we were looking at, at landing on a recommendation for the amount of the levy at the March, the, the last board meeting in March, which I think is the twenty-ninth. And, but, but, but we're at a point where we can make a recommendation to run these levies. And we have, and it's, it's really not tied to what we're doing from a projection standpoint, it's tied to levying the most we can to get to max budget. And that's, that's what these levies represent. We know that, just based upon the projections I, I talked about previously, that we're still relying upon one-time-only funds to balance. So it's not that there's a, not a use for these funds. I mean, we, we're trying to build up these, these budgets so we can, can meet salary and staff and salary obligations and, and the other increases that are reflected, including, you know, pulling away from ESER. So that's the, the rationale for getting to our max budget. The amounts are reflected in the resolution. And the ballot on page thirty for the elementary, you'll see is a two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five oh four. We've identified the number of mils approximately one point nine one. When we get new tax valuations, that'll be less. But for purposes of the ballot, that's what it is. The tax is two fifty-eight on a, a property value of a hundred thousand dollars. And, and we've talked about this before. There's also the two hundred thousand reflected. You, it's not what you can sell your house for, it's what it's assessed at. And so you have to look at your tax statement to, to see that. But if you're close to three hundred or close to four hundred, you just multiply that two fifty-eight by three or by four to come up with your number. And that's an annual cost associated with the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar operational levy. The high school is, is a, a lot less of a levy. The tax valuation is bigger because the tax base is much bigger. You'll see on page thirty-two that the annual tax is sixty-nine cents on a hundred thousand dollar home. That's the annual obligation. And again, depending on the value of the home, you can, you can do the math. And, and again, it's not what you'd sell the house for, but what's reflected on your tax statement is its, is its value. So with that, I'll...
Any questions?
Questions?
Seeing none. So we'll do the elementary first. Is there elementary motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash six E? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Whitcher. Any final comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor for approving the elementary district general fund levy election? Please raise your hand to indicate yes. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Onto item four, which is the high school district general levy election. Is there a high school board member motion? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for passing the high school district general fund levy election? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So the next two topics are the elementary district building reserve fund levy election, as well as the high school district building reserve fund levy election. And I'll pass it back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. So when our budget and levy committee met, we, we talked a bit about the, the building reserve levy. Burley's done a presentation for, for, for that group, for our facility committee and for the board. Following some of those conversations, the, the levy we're proposing is, is increased from six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand in each of the districts. The, the levies are, in the elementary, would be a five-year levy, and then the high school, a seven-year levy. I think I've got that right. Yes. And part of the intent of, of staggering those levies is when we renew them, they come up at different times. And, and we've had building reserve levies. We've had them in both districts. And, and we haven't had them since twenty, the last levy expired in, in twenty-twenty-one, Burley? Twenty-fifteen.
The high school expired in two thousand and eighteen, the elementary in two thousand and sixteen.
All right, thanks. So this is, this is something that we've pushed off. And we've pushed off, it's an annual maintenance obligation. You'll see that the expenditures are for roof repairs, electrical systems, mechanical systems, facility modifications, repairs, equipping buildings. So it's, it covers a wide swath of facility obligations for all of our buildings and all of our square footage. It doesn't, in the elementary side, it's less than what we had in place. We had two levies in the past, one for three sixty, one for five hundred thousand. In the high school, we had one for four fifty. So we're also trying to be mindful of minimizing the levy and keeping it where it's covering operational costs for Burley. And, and so the, you know, these are levies that we really are at the point of needing to have them pass as well. And so Burley's here tonight, and he can provide additional input as to those, those levies. And what we're, one thing I'd point out is that, from a general fund standpoint, is some of the expenditures ends up working back onto the general fund. And so with a building reserve levy, we're, we're intentionally moving elevator maintenance costs and snow removal costs out of the general fund as a way of preserving that fund and moving them into the building reserve. So that, that results in part of that savings that's on the, the projections I presented. So, Burley, you have anything to add?
No, I think that was a good recap. Thanks, Pat.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Sherman?
What is our current budget per year for building maintenance?
So right now, our, our fixed costs, and it's kind of what Pat was just referencing, it will help take some of the pressure off of the general fund, is sitting right around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's just fixed costs, elevator maintenance, snow removal, pesticide control, that sort of thing. And then, over the last three years, our projections have been in about, in about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range on top of that. And in all reality, we've been able to utilize a lot of the bond. So the bond's not including what we've been able to kind of piggyback onto the bond with some of our larger repairs in our, in our, in our building. So that's not counting anything that the building reserve took care of. I'm sorry, the bond took care of in the last couple of years. It's now been spent out. And so has the remaining part of the building reserves that expired in eighteen and sixteen, which were voted in in two thousand and eleven. So we haven't had a building reserve levy since two thousand and eleven. So, but we have a lot of needs that haven't been met over the last ten years. And a lot of, and a lot of that has to do with equipment and our roofing. And, you know, part of the bond, we were, I have never done the math, but I'm estimating we did about fifty percent of our roofs and probably ninety percent of our mechanical systems. So there's still some needs out there. Really, very little flooring. Flooring is very expensive. I mentioned to the board that we have asbestos needs typically in our flooring, where an average classroom could, could cost us upwards of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars if it needs to be abated. That's with the abating and with the product of the new flooring. So it's becoming more and more expensive to, to do things. Hopefully, that answers your, your question with some of that history.
How much of the bond that we passed a couple of years ago was set aside for maintenance of the stuff that we did?
I'll answer the best I can think. I think you're, well, it wasn't set aside for day-to-day maintenance. Bonds are typically for capital improvement projects. So the, they were, they were, the bond language was written very, very detailed, actually, where it identified and outlined what, what that was going towards. A lot of it, some of it was new buildings, a lot of it was renovate, larger renovations, mechanical upgrades. There were some roofing upgrades, safety, security upgrades. So it didn't go to day-to-day operations, though. It didn't, none of the bond was for the day-to-day operations until we kind of got to the end for the larger scope projects in regards to like the mechanical systems. What it meant within the bond language, we were able to kind of help take care of towards the end of the bond with remaining funds.
Trustee Witt?
All right. So I don't know if this is going to end up going to Pat or Burley at the end. But my understanding is, this isn't a wish list of items. There's approximately the three hundred and fifty thousand, you said, of fixed costs. And then there's quite a few, like, safety upgrades that need to be made. I remember you talked about doors, specifically, that have been a real problem. There's vape sensors, security cameras, and just a plethora of safety items that have been neglected and need to be picked up. But also, if we, if these didn't go through, my understanding is that the general fund has to pick up the slack on it. And in the elementary district, that is particularly troublesome at the moment. My real question, though, as long as you can clarify any of that that I said, is how much do we still have in the general fund budgets that are truly maintenance if we were to pass the levies at the amounts that you have right now at seven hundred thousand for each district?
Well, what's being proposed at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that I referred to, that is pretty much what the building, what the general fund is taking care of at this point in time. You're right in, in all your comments. The one thing that I'll, that I'll emphasize on is, we, we tour our buildings quite a bit in the last few months with our safety committee. And, and there's been a, a pretty common occurrence with our administrators asking for more safety and security measure, or tools. And, and though we were able to make some really great upgrades, I think there's some more we need to do in our, in our district in regards to that. And this, this, these levies will also help, help secure some of those upgrades.
One thing, I was gonna add to, to that. And they, since the levies have expired, and Burley mentioned the bond projects taking hold for, for, since twenty sixteen, the, the board earmarked some, some one-time-only funds that, that Burley's been using to cover these costs. And those funds on, at the end of the year, when we've had year-end money in the general fund, we've moved those expenses into the general fund intentionally, just to continue to, to buy Burley another year. It's, it's more, again, in, in being conservative and how we try to extend the, the time before we asked for a, a building reserve levy. We were, we were cognizant of, of COVID and the economic impact that that had. We were cognizant of the bond ask in twenty fifteen. And so we've, we've pushed this a long way. And so that's, that's, you know, something that, that these one-time funds have been, you know, it's sort of pulled together for, for Burley's use for these type of projects. But I think he's really experiencing a buildup of expense, maintenance items. And so that's, you know, we, we didn't take lightly the ask for the levy, is what I'm saying. And so, or the timing of the request for the levy. And, and Burley's done a good job of outlining specifically the, the, based upon past expenditures, where he plans to use those funds. And it's spelled out in the, the, these, the description in the ballot as, as well as his background section.
Trustee Witt?
Sorry, this is more of a comment. This, I was just thinking more about things that Grayson mentioned earlier with, like, we have all this grant money coming in, and you have, like, certain things you can spend it on. Well, the general fund is kind of like the bucket that anything, well, you can use it for anything, which includes this. And you can have, like, a grant that funds certain positions, but you could also continue it with the general fund later. It doesn't work very well because we're pretty fixed on what our budget is in the general fund. And so this really, to me, is like moving that stuff out of the general fund that they've allowed to sit there while we've had ESER money and stuff to cover a bunch of things and to really not ask the taxpayers for any money for a while. So it's, yeah, twenty-eleven, you guys said, I believe, since the last time they asked for the money for building reserve. So it's, it's been a while.
Trustee of Gers?
So just, I don't know if, if you guys answered this exactly what Keegan asked there. But if this, these do pass, it's about three hundred and twenty-five grand each or total that we've been supplementing with. that we've been supplementing with one-time or general fund. Does that, is that a savings for us? Is this, is that three twenty-five on both sides built into our budget where we'd have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus to help us out?
Yeah, and it's, Burley identified the expenditures in the general fund. The budgets are nowhere near that. So it's, it's, it's something that's not budgeted, but you get to the end of the year, and you got to pay for snow removal. And it's, it's expended out of Burley's line item or out of that, it's over expended out of the general fund. So the budget isn't built into the general fund. I want to make that clear. It's, it's where it can be expended and has been expended. So when you look at the projections we went through, we did factor in, and you'll see that recalibration shows half a million in the elementary and a hundred thousand in the high school. And I wouldn't say that's three twenty-five because it's, it's not. And the reason it's not is that you can't regularly rely upon three twenty-five being expended out of the general fund because the budgets aren't set at that amount. And, but it does recognize some, some savings because we, I mean, we know this year we're spending eighty thousand on snow removal. And, and we know the elevator maintenance obligation is pretty set. So there's, there's a healthy chunk that's relied to, or related back to the building reserve passing, and it's over a hundred thousand.
Trustee Decker?
And this levy, just unlike certain kinds of monies and like other kinds of monies, if we don't spend all of this each year, it doesn't go away, and it can stay in a building reserve for a long time, which is in fact what happened to some of the last time the voters were asked for this type of specified funding back in two thousand and eleven. It was a levy that was maybe a five-year levy at that time, but the monies that were collected during that five-year period actually were eked out over quite a bit longer. And then, so the, the request is made based on the best guess about what costs are going to look like and anticipated maintenance needs and upgrade needs and annual costs. If we have, you know, snow mageddon four years in a row, this could, might not be enough to meet the cost. And if we have a bunch of really dry years, maybe we'll end up with, am I right about that?
No, it's an excellent point. I'm glad you brought it up because the, all of the building reserves that termed out would have some funds left in under certain categories. And that's exactly right. And a lot of times, the way that the building reserve was planned is that you get a certain amount each year, but you knew a roof replacement was going to be, you know, three times that. So you let it grow intentionally until you had enough to build, to cover the roof replacement. And, you know, we're, we're fortunate with the school major maintenance account that we're able to take care of some of these, those major projects and instead focus the building reserve really on what it's intended to do, which is maintenance. And, but that's an excellent point. And what used to happen with building reserves is the state was encouraging their passage by schools, and they would provide a block grant for any school that had a building reserve. And so we built up some carryover, which is the one-time-only funds that the board allocated to Burley to use in the interim between the bond passing and, and this moment right now.
Trustee Sherman?
So the, the snow removal and the monitoring things, I feel like those, I mean, it's Montana. We're going to have snow removal every year. And monitoring that happens every month. So to me, that, that sounds more like a general budget thing. It's something that, I mean, we have to pay it. We have to pay it every year. It's like the gas bill or the electric bill. So I don't really, and three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for those, that's, that's pretty much the levy right there. So I don't really understand. And I, while I appreciate that we haven't asked the taxpayers for anything for a long time, now's a bad time to ask. It seems like everybody's asking, and everybody's already hurting, so that's, that's an issue. So can you tell me why these recurring things aren't already built in to our budget?
Yes, it's simply available budget. So when we budget, the first thing we cover is staff. And so when we negotiate staff increases or when we need to hire special ed staff, that's the first thing that we build in. And not every budget is set at what the expenditure is going to be. Now, now, this has been a tough snow year, but our, you know, frankly, we're not increasing general fund budgets because we have other uses for building budget than this, than the snow removal item. If you look back at prior budget projections, it's been an item. Elevator maintenance has been an item. Increased discretionary allocations are an item. None of those are prioritized, and, and what gets prioritized is staffing, frankly. And so, yes, there are definitely other obligations, but what we rely upon is some budgeted, some expenditures going below budget, some going above budget. So when I show that recalibration on the projections, what I'm saying is that we've had a weird three years with COVID, but we know that the sub-line item for budgeting is not expended like it used to because we haven't been able to get subs. So we know that we can adjust, and we can move, we can make that budget reflect more actual expenditures. So I don't disagree with you, but it's, it's, you can't set every budget based upon what the expenditure is because you run out of budget or what the expenditure, or what you would like the budget to be. And instead, what you do is you rely upon during the course of the year, a period of time where, you know, a person leaves their position and you rehire their replacement a month later. So that's a month of salary you don't cover. And we know during this COVID period of time is we have people coming in and out of our schools, and we're having a heck of a time hiring people that have positions budgeted in our general fund. So that recalibration that I referenced reflects position savings. And so we can go in and say, we know during the course of the year that, that, that some staff are going to, some positions are going to take longer to fill. And, and so then that budget savings, which you have to budget positions, but there is budget savings that you're going to cover some of these expenditures on. But what we, what we do, and plugging in half a million on the elementary, is just saying, we don't want to, you know, we want to be, we want to look at expenditures relative to budget. And this is an opportunity on the snow removal side to move those expenditures out of the general fund expectation mode. And then that does help the general fund out. Hopefully, that answered your question.
I'll just kind of clarify a couple of questions that came out of, over there as well, is three hundred and twenty-five thousand is K-12. So when I did my study, it became really, I tried to make it by district. I promise you, I did. It just became really, really difficult to do and, and super time-consuming. And so the three twenty-five is for K-12. And as the levy goes, it's about one point four million dollars K-12 is what we'll be getting. So three hundred and twenty-five thousand of that's out of, out the door, and the one point four million with seven hundred thousand in each district. And I want to be clear on, seven hundred grand is, is a, it'll go fast. We have a lot more need than that. Kind of to trustee Decker's word, we have more need to that, but we also have to be sympathetic to the, to what is the best time to run, to run a levy, and how much do we ask for to make it pass? The budget committee talked about that quite a bit, and it became a lot, there's a lot of conversations around it. Easily could have asked for more money, and I believe other double A schools around the state are asking for a lot more money than we are. I think we're being very conscious of, of, of that and how it's going to impact the taxpayers and how, I feel like my department's done a very good job, my staff, our trades guys, our grounds guys, our, our custodians, and our, and our supervisors alike have all done really well, keeping budgets in mind. And, and we've been able to stretch our dollars a long ways, and we'll continue to do that. That's kind of part of what we need to do as, as a public entity. But this will, this, this is something we don't want to wait twelve more years to do. We're going to try to keep it, keep this in a rotation so that O and M can continue to operate our buildings, our new buildings, our awesomely renovated buildings, and make them look, continue to look really, really good and operate as they should. I mean, just today, my HVAC supervisor or tech came to me and said, we put twelve thousand dollars into a boiler system, or we replace it for seventy-five. What do we do, what do you want to do? We're still getting some numbers on that, but, and that's a system over at Sentinel, an old boiler system from two thousand, needs a new heat exchanger. So those kind of things pop up all the time. Just bought a server for security for thirteen thousand. Prices are incredibly much higher than what we've been used to over the years, and, and technology is not cheap, right, Brian? Technology is super, super expensive, and we're finding that out in the O and M side of it because over the last seven, eight years, the districts became automated, and we're finding out that it's, it's expensive. So we feel like the seven hundred thousand dollars is, is, was very, was looked at very, very thoroughly and, and think it's probably the, the best way to go right now.
Trustee Mercer?
Suppose just comment more on the question, but just on that note, I mean, I think it's frustrating that the doors at Hellgater, what, sixty thousand dollars for doors? You're like, what, how can that be? But I would just say, I've, I've been here for three years. How can I put this? I grew up a lot with my grandparents, and you ate the stock on your broccoli, and you didn't throw away good things that worked. Everything I've seen of Burley is that he is someone that my grandparents would be proud to trust their stuff with. He is not doing frivolous things, and we know that. And I just hope that people know that. I guess I look at this as not an ask, but an opportunity. Any money we, if we don't do this and the doors break, we have to have doors, that's a teaching position. If we can move three hundred thousand dollars, that's five our teachers. So this is an opportunity for the community. We don't get, we can't, as we keep saying, these other things are controlled by statute. This is our opportunity to invest in education. So I guess I want to afford the committee that opportunity, and I think it will be well spent.
Trustee Sherman?
I think we can all agree by the two-question thing that school finance is difficult. It's confusing. And so when we come up and say, oh, well, it's necessary, and then we all just vote on it, nobody understands what we've just done. They'll just say, oh, well, they, you know, they wanted it, so they just passed the, the tax on to us. And so by asking these questions, I hope what I've done is help everybody that is watching or will look at this later, ask questions, understands kind of of where we've gone with this. You know, that we have looked at, at all of the options, that we have looked at all of the budgets, that we do look at fixing things rather than just replacing things, and how much more, it's not just going in and replacing a piece of carpet. It's, it's abatement, and all of the things that we've discussed are all the things that our community needs to know instead of, yeah, they just passed another levy.
May I respond? And I, I appreciate the comment, trustee Sherman, because the, part of the reason that we're talking about it now, all these levies, is that instead of in two weeks, is to give ourselves an opportunity to provide that information. And the ballots come out mid-April, so it's a really short window, and we're not doing anything more but communicating that, you know, the rationale, the need as best we can.
Trustee Witche?
Is there a communication plan from MCPS to communicate the needs and everything laid out in a, between now and April, so the questions can be answered? And the public does know?
Yeah, it's called Tyler Christensen.
That's what I was getting at.
Any other trustee questions? So we'll do this one in two different, we'll do an elementary motion and a high school motion. So is there an elementary motion for the elementary district building reserve fund levy election? Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins, second by trustee of Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing an all elementary trustees in favor for passing this motion, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Onto the high school. Is there a motion to approve the high school district building reserve levy fund? Moved by trustee of Garris, second by Vice Chair Hobbins. Any final comments by trustee? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the high school district building reserve fund levy election, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And so the next two items are the consideration adoption of Resolution twenty-two-three-eight, elementary and secondary. So I'll go ahead and pass that back over to you, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you, Chair Old Person. So page thirty-seven and thirty-eight include the resolutions. These resolutions are required by statute, which is referenced in the Resolution twenty-nine dash one sixteen. That's for the transportation, tuition, and adult ed permissive levies. And then twenty, or sorry, twenty-nine dash five oh-two is the statute that applies for the building reserve permissive levy. So this requirement came out of legislature in two thousand and seventeen. What it requires is for the school board to provide the public with an estimate of likely permissive levies, and it's only an estimate. But what we're representing here is, is our best representation at the moment of those permissive levies in these funds. And the transportation increase is, is the, the largest, but reflects the largest budget of all of those identified. And we're just making a, an estimate there of the, the increased obligation. We're negotiating with our transportation provider again this year. Tuition, this represents excess special ed costs, and you saw that on the general fund projections where we're relying upon this permissive levy to offset staffing costs of, of special ed staff. Also helps out the general fund. Then the building reserve permissive levy, and Tyler threw up a revised page thirty-seven because what I added to the permissive levy on the building reserve side is a reference to state aid that we received from this. And so as we permissively levy for projects, for major maintenance projects, and here there's some water line replacements that we'd use the funds for, the state provides a match, and that state, the state match is increased. And so in this case, we, we would expand the three hundred and sixty-six thousand and receive point seven-four of that amount from the state in addition to that, which totals two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So it's a, it's a big deal to sort of leverage some state funds as well, and those funds would then be used for these water projects that Burley has, has scheduled. On the high school side, same, same budgeted funds. There's a smaller boost on the tuition side and also a boost on the adult ed side. They have some boiler issues at their school, so this is part of a buildup of funds on a facility use basis. Again, an estimate. We haven't increased the adult ed permissive levy since COVID, so that's a modest increase there. The building reserve on the high school side, like the elementary side, actually is going down slightly. Fifteen hundred in the high school, forty-eight hundred in the elementary, primarily because of the increase in the allocation from the state. So the state allocation on the high school is one hundred and fifty-three thousand. And, and that, that's an increase from last year where the allocation from the state was one hundred and twenty-eight thousand in that ballpark. And so, again, we're leveraging some of those state funds. We've identified projects here. There's some boiler replacement, front door replacement, roofing repairs. Again, very much tied to the major maintenance statute, twenty-nine dash five twenty-five, referencing school and student safety items, roofing, HVAC, window and door system, plumbing systems, and that's what we're talking about here. So these are our estimates. The board will adopt these budgets in August with final permissive levy numbers, and this is our best estimate right now for what those levies would be.
Any trustee questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Actually, this isn't a question about this, but having just come back from the legislature... Actually, this isn't a question about this, but having just come back from the legislature, there's a bill right now that would really affect these kinds of decisions. And I think people should look at it. It's House Bill 774. And at one level, it just sounds like we're just moving the election time. But what the bill proposes is having an election only every two years for board members in November of even years. And the reason I'm bringing it up is there's all kinds of attempts right now to fix things that that would cause problems for. And one of them is budgets because then you would have to be looking out much further. So one of the quote fixes is to extend the time in which you do averaging for enrollment. So you're not doing it just for two or three years, but for five. Another is the number of years for trustees. It might move to four or six years and then they have to be also staggered. But, and, but, and then actually some good things which would free up some of the budget issues. So there's some attempts to put in that bill, things like allowing the board to move money around much more easily and allowing the board to dispose of school property without going through a rigamarole. But I think it's a bill you should look at because it really has huge implications for how we figure out our budgets. So that's House Bill 774. And it's already been approved for a second, in the second reading in the education committee, but it's going to appropriations.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to mention one other change and it's reflected up on the screen, but the building reserve referenced a voted levy and that's not what's required by statute. And I think it's confusing by listing it there because we are running a voted levy. And so that's been scratched. Otherwise, this is published and I didn't want a voter to look at it and see one place we're running a levy and one place there's a zero because there is no voted levy at the moment. But, so that's scratched and then the state aid is added. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier.
Any trustee questions? We'll do two, like we did the previous two. So we'll do an elementary motion first. By any element, moved by vice chair Hobbins, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for passing the resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Onto the second one for the high school. Is there a high school board motion? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Is there a second? By trustee Witt, any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for passing the high school adoption of the resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Onto topic nine, which is to replace the food service central kitchen dishwasher. And this is over to you, Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you. So as you see from the board write-up, we're purchasing maybe the city's most expensive This dishwasher is replacing the existing old unit that's currently in our central kitchen. As you saw from the write-up, was purchased, used in, in the late 90s for the central kitchen. So the efficiency of it's probably not really that good. So we, we went out for an RFP, we had five responses. And then we did a, a scoring of those responses based on some of the criteria I listed in the, in the write-up. 50% of that criteria is based on cost. Schedule is super important because we have to have a dishwasher to start a school. And we made that very important because right now it seems like everything's in shortage and we have to be able to get things shipped in. Seems like these are readily available though, as we found out. Machine specifications, we know there are some proprietary machines out there. We're not really that crazy about proprietary machines. We felt like it was something we needed to score because those can tend to be a little bit more expensive to repair. And also it sometimes does not allow our trades and craft team to repair the items. It has to be done by a licensed technician and it can, that's where it can kind of create some other costs as well. And of course warranties. And so through our, through our scoring process, we chose Bargreen Ellingson with a Champion machine, which they are able to meet the timeline. They came in at $200,320.37. And we plan to use food service funding to pay for, for said dishwasher. I can answer any questions.
Any trustee questions? Seeing an, this is an elementary school board motion. Is there a motion to approve the request? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Decker. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the request, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Onto topic B, which is the personnel negotiation and policy. Topic one is to approve the personnel report. We have two, an elementary motion and a high school motion. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to you, Mr. Roth.
This month's report is again a monthly routine report for both the elementary and high school.
I'll take a motion for the elementary motion.
Nice job, dude.
One sentence.
Moved by trustee, moved by vice chair Hobbins. Is there a second for the elementary? Second by trustee Decker. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for, for passing the personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Is there a high school motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by trustee Sherman. Second by trustee Vogel. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for passing the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Yep, so the time is now 7:57 and we will go into executive session, but please use the facilities as needed. We came out of executive session at 8:59 PM and it is now 9:04 and we'll move on to item 10, topic A, which is the trustee discussion on superintendent candidate. Any trustee comments? Trustee Decker.
So we, in executive session, had a good conversation. Everyone had a lot to share and a lot of comments and impressions from the day that we were able to spend with the candidate, Micah Hill. We really appreciated reading all of the comments that folks made in writing from a series of forums that took place with students, with administrators, with staff, with our union representatives. And we were really pleased to see such, such a positive consensus among those comments about their impressions of the candidate as well, which really aligned with the impressions that most of us shared from having had a chance to interview the candidate too. So we had a great conversation about the candidate's strengths and experience in both K-8 and high school settings and his track record of leadership. We talked about what that transition would look like coming into our particular district and its particular needs. But in the end, yeah? No? Do I not say? In the end, I think it's okay for me to say that our, that in our discussion, we were very supportive of the idea of offering the position to Mr. Hill.
Any other, this is information only. Any other trustee comments? Trustee of Garris.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I think Micah showed a lot in his interview across the board, as Grace said, the comments from students, staff, the unions, we're not universally, but because nobody's universally, but we're very positive. My opinion was, was Micah's a very positive person. He's a energetic, he's got a, a wide worldview, which will be a benefit to MCPS. And I, I'm very supportive of him. I think he's, he's got the skillset of what we need in MCPS and would do a great job for us.
Any other trustee comments? Any public comments? Seeing an, onto topic B, which is to select a new superintendent. I'll take, I will take a motion from anybody? Trustee Decker?
I move that we offer the position of superintendent to Micah Hill and we request that our council move into developing a contract offer in as timely a fashion as possible.
Second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Okay, any final trustee comments? Uh, trustee, yeah. So I was going to say, my comment is to thank Ms. Tracy Long for all her hard work during this whole process. There's no way we could have done this without all of your support and direction. Any other final trustee comments? Any public comment?
Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U, president of the Missoula Education Association and obviously very tired. I just wanted to give a shout out to all of you for staying, for deliberating for an hour, for reading all of the comments that we left and for including everyone in the process both times around. Tracy made the, the process seem very seamless and I think we learned the $27,000 lesson that maybe we've got our own in-house way of doing things that works really well. As far as your, your motion goes, we, our unions, both MMCEO and MEA are in support of, of this motion. The majority of our members feel the same way and we look forward to working with the new superintendent. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Seeing an, all those in favor for approving the motion on the table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including Mr. Lodge. The time is 9:09, the meeting is adjourned.